So we get new construction or something that wasn't already there. And that's why older, um, inner core communities have a lot of problems with heavily over I figure it's kind of worse. Cause they're, they're built out and the system really benefits great for the dollar. But one of the things that I've been doing is like when a house sells, I go in and I pick up everything that wasn't in that house previously in the assessment records. And I had this new, because I think that so if they had, you know, they didn't have the right number of fat pans inside or they didn't have a fire play, I could do all this sort of stuff myself and I can see these out on the listing. I picked that up as new. Is it mitigating a whole lot? Probably not, but it's mitigating somewhat.
But, but, but yes, what I think is, is double the work in this. And that's been part of our sort of we've developed strategy for now. Is if you could encourage density on the same piece of property at the more taxable value per spread foot. You really, that new growth, yeah, it's on, it's an AP on the efforts comes on, came on for example. Now that's at the DDA, so we don't see it in cities, but if the DDA gets a big
But it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect that.
But it does affect the health, right? And that new growth, that density helps a lot. So, so instead of a second town home, like where millennial places would be, we're gonna take one home. There and turn it into three or whatever the stories on twenty, what is it, twenty-three U.S. Thank you. And that, that, that build parcel of its village or cities, but I think you're not gonna bump our tax value by a lot.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't think it's a city thing. I just don't like the impact to how the identical houses next to each other, some reason they're there twenty years and somebody else just Well, I know the whole story. But that's the same thing we can't do.
Well, we can.
That lets you
We should use your power. Yes, well, yeah, you can do power.
Now, and in some ways In some ways, it's, it's a situation, be careful, which, which one, because down in ninety-four, the voters voted the same because they're trying to keep older people from being taxed out of their houses.
Right.
But what's happening now is the younger people are being taxed out of the city board.
Well, if they have a question already in place, it's hopefully, but not the
But yeah, you, you would need, at this point, you would need a constitutional amendment to change that. It is, you didn't get it right.
Just give me something to think about with all that.
I think that was a very good point of conversation that, you know, uh, some people just see, oh, our taxes are going up like they know and it's a city thing, but there is a lot that it's a safe impact. And, and then you said it, decisions that were made by voters who watch the county that impacts it, so it's, it's really good to have that conversation that's fair.
And we try, we try to get that information out, that, that kind of information goes out, you know, like with the tax bills, you know, just what your tax bill is made of and, you know, that sort of kind of let people know that. But then again, a lot of people voted, they only look at their tax bill because it's an honor to pay off.
But I think perhaps it comes maybe to the end of the following, about the fires, you know, it's those things become a thing that's you know, like it's irritating of like, you know, for them, it's, they look, you know, here's what's gonna be, it's a level. You're not putting anything, something that's just a city or, you know.
Jamie, if you look down, we're back to twenty sixteen, we see the GL bond.
Yep.
That was what it did. That we used to have.
The GL bond was a voted mileage for the street street. So everybody had an additional two mils, or three flames at the city. No, 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 no. Paid off bond, so it was, it was two mils was the maximum. You could see above, they never lever, never levy anywhere near the two.
Yeah, clearly not levy what we need for bonding.
Much less, but we had to go to the borders, this is even before I was here, they were, they were recording that code. Well, had expired at two dollars sixteen.
Yeah, and that, that was to, to redo the street state by means free and, and, and just off the means free.
All, all there are those.
So like if you, if you were to go out for a fire department, you're gonna have, or how are they, well, it's a big break. Um, and that's what they approved, and then over the years, our taxable value would like increase. We might be levying two point eight or two point six or, you know.
That's why they put the tax about. Well, I like, I like to be able to say, if you showed us something, what do we do with that increase? And we, we did that the heck out of what we did in two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and what we did in fourteen fifteen. Put the nine hundred thousand dollars with that different capital increase together. We did a lot, we did a lot of miles of growth for people that.
On the eighteen to nineteen, it was three block.
Streets in our creation, people really, really, certainly. That's why the fire stations would be tough there, just. Well, you know, in fact, it doesn't, doesn't automatically translate to a fact. Yeah, it's hard. After this is
It's not visible every day.
Right.
Not driving a hot hole every day.
I don't understand that, that if they're not driving up a fire station.
Maybe it's just a little bit.
Yeah.
That's true. That's exactly.
But that makes it our obligation for, 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 to well, to the residents, right, to, to help those. But, but
Any questions, any questions?
Yes, it's a, okay, so there's, I was driving down from here and I stopped and central first probably, and stop sign for the sidewalk, but the lights, but it's just down the way. And then I advanced to Broad and stopped there, and the stop sign might be after the sidewalk. So like I've been best practice is to have the stop sign in front of the sidewalk. Anyway. It just, cause I know we talked about fifth and Dover and that stop sign going into the crossway. And I want to talk about maybe the stop bar in because there is no sidewalk, the sidewalk is not in there, it's maybe individual two, so like maybe the stop, the stop sign or here. Stop bar, and then just happened to be about, like, the stop sign thing in general, and I just caught that, and I would have to, like, drive through. So that, that, that
This is Broad. If you're on, where?
Yeah, or, like, so coming towards already the other
I'm coming from the library.
I'll do my own.
Are you, 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 you're not, you're not pursuing, well, that's a good catch. Oh, there it is, there it is.
Yeah, it's central.
Yeah, that's in the last. Now, is that the old one?
Yes.
So that, that could be changed, that's.
Yeah, that might have been changed here.
Right.
Hello. So what's the deal with stop bars? That, are they, are they I mean, you do talk about some of those different questions, but I find them to be helpful. So when I come to that, I think fifth, the library, you know, coming up to Broad and, like, I think they might have stop bars, which is helpful. And it just seems like it draws extra, like, maybe stop signs. That's why I just love the way, the way it's here. Oh, that is great, but now it's just like, oh, wait.
Twenty, twenty four inch bar, white bar, that's right, it's called stop bar. Yeah, and, and they're, they're not super expensive. You can see one right there on Main Street, go to left, look, right, there, it's faded. Instead of a white bar, you have to sign off, kind of, that's a storage of stuff.
Yeah, that's, you see a major roads and stuff.
Oh, yeah.
The traffic closed stop, you see them on the side streets, you don't see them as well.
Okay.
Not saying that you don't, but.
Well, and I was gonna say, the, the challenge is, where, where do you pick and choose?
So, yeah, well, cause I know we have a, but maybe rational, you have major streets and that.
Cause I, I, you know, theoretically, you could, you know,
prevent an intersection.
But, but put them at a, at an intersection. It just becomes a lot to make over, over, over time.
Yeah, the same question that we asked. Our major streets, most of our major streets are spread. And I, I noticed that that's how you tell it's a major street, so like, Fourth Street has two lines in it. Or it used to. It, it has lines in it. But Fifth Street, though, where you were, there's no center line. Spread. Okay, that's because it's meant to be a floor or a minor street in terms of our designation, we need more funding for the major street. Now, every street can't be a major street, there's another idea to it. But Fourth Street is a major street, Hudson Street is a major street, which has straight. The only major street that doesn't have straight, it's second. So that was questioned, but we've never, never been there since I've been here. Is that it? Oh, it has one. At, at, at least a portion. Maybe it does have a doubt. I thought that's one of the
Maybe we need to restructure it, but let's start.
Maybe we'll be able to, yeah, but all the major streets have a straight. The, the, there's a second, second. Okay, maybe that's what I think. Maybe that's because it's not, I don't know, second all the way or it's just once in a second, you know, it feels second.
And, and Elmind is definitely on the rest. And I think, and, 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 and Elmind, Forest, uh, or are, are all in, in rough shape as well. Uh, we, we picked out Dan Boy because of the, the traffic that Dan Boy has compared to some of the others. But Elmind especially, I think the section here, Elmind is dead. Uh, maybe for that.
Well, again, I, I, that's why I said the value, if you, if you levy the bill, we have money to do those. Sort of being considered, you know, if, if you levy the bill, the road stuff is better. People are gonna ask, do you, do you, why, why are there taxes? Like, if it shows you've done something. You know, better than how much cost to do that and that, that's our issue. But, you know, the, the, the thing that's helpful about this is this, this is meant to, this is meant to simplify what our fund balances would be each year based upon projections of spending. That's pretty welcome to all of it. When you make most of the time spent, because of over, bringing in revenue. Doesn't like, doesn't like it, going forward, we have a growing fund balance in the street fund.
Luckily, you could also do more projects with that.
That's my point, that's my point, sorry. You sure of that?
Right, right. So with something like streets and are there reasons that we have, you want some stock now because it could be something that's strong, I think, that happens, things that
You, you, I, I, I think in every fund, you want some multiple fund balance.
We have, we have occasionally gone streets really low, but it makes everybody a little switchy to that.
But I mean, what can order, just to, so it looks like at the end of last year, we got one or two or something. And we're not able to have five thirty-six at the end of this year. End of the month. Plus twenty, seven seventy, but.
Yeah, the other thing to remember on the streets too is they have fifty-one money that we could jump out for the revenue for the state. That's based on the production that the state makes, which could change if it's not, if it can be taxed.
Well, and I, I, I've been advocating that as the DDA gets healthier, they can spend those dollars on infrastructure, the DDA can make homes on the streets that or water main, sand clear, sewer, storm, water, they can help us on the streets they have.
I can do this.
So we, we should, we should try to encourage, ask for that help and focus our street dollars on the other streets, unless it's unless it's version, like, main street was really bad back in two thousand twelve, we didn't have any money. We had, had a downtown market, not great, you know, but so we, we did that, and that's, we'd spend the money. And that's kind of a struggle, kind of, one back, first key words.
Yeah, the other thing too for roads is I've always been working on kind of a comprehensive roads report. So it'll, it'll include the P S ratings and rough estimates to do various roads with different treatments. Um, and, and once we get that, that might be worth taking to the folks that, that have a conversation on, on that. And what the future of our projects look like.
Looked here, it's kind of, maybe it's all this crack feeling, I think that's not just for coffee. Hard to find. I feel that, I feel that, like, coming up to the, the ones, the length of the road.
It's a
Like, if that's just a standard, that's just
Yeah, so I
So, making this road, there's a slogan, there's a mix of fixes. And when you build a new road, on Central, if the contractor did the job, he designed this, you shouldn't see a crack road like this, you know. It shouldn't be this by right of that, you're gonna see those air iron cracks. So the theory is if you can steal those cracks when they're small, you're gonna, that water will be, um, the, 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 the recycle. If you leave it open, you allow the elements to help further accelerate the direction of the road. Now, it could be that it's cracked or, you know, it's condensation, whatever, soil, it's a tower, heavy loading trucks, there's a whole lot of things, the wind, but the first fix or better maintenance method is crack sealing. And then there's things like fog sealing and keep sealing, every one of them a little more defined or a little bit more We did, uh, keep sealing a number of our roads in Brother Westridge, New York Farms. Um, I don't know if we did every extra crossing, I don't know if we did one there. Yes. Well, there's stones down. You, you have not just seals, the county road, it's still Right, right. But we did that on residential roads. It's for a long, the way, the road, it's tremendous.
It seems to me that that's what they're doing nowadays with the county, more, they'll put a road down, within a year or two, they put that, it's, I, this is how I look at it, as a wear and call. So
And the what?
A wearing, like, surface type, and so they put the, here you got this brand new road, and then they got this kind of a bumpy road, but it's gonna prolong, like he said, the life of the road, because now you're gonna wear that before it gets to the good stuff below. And you're seeing, like, it open counting around that, you see it everywhere.
The, the, you know, asphalt is has two of them, um, just much better, so it's not close. Well, the first, they're open to the atmosphere. You lose, that are the time, it becomes brittle, it becomes brittle, it cracks, so when you, when you seal it or you cover it again, you protect that layer from that exposure to the, the natural sun, the heat, the cold, the, the, the vibration. And, and you keep it more flexible, maybe the seventh.
And, and it's if you crack, like, keep sealing the finance a lot, or do you like to grow?
So, 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 yeah, different, so, well, condition and crack seal is very inexpensive to apply.
Uh, and that, that, that There's a whole study on this. How these are, they've, the surface evaluation here, depending on the branch of the road, that you recommend for the maintenance activities. So when the road is built, reconstructed, new construction ten, it's a brand new road, ten, as a material, it's paper, not usually represented, it's crack sealed. As the length of that paper goes on and on, it's stuck here, you know, that flow. At the ultimate, maybe it's where you leave the surface. And we, we ought to be able to build twenty years on Central Street, and then the next, then we should I mean, if we do crack seal, and maybe one of those gates or seals, maybe in twenty years, probably should try to resurface, at least, like, no, two inches and put back to but there's gotta be seven inches of asphalt there, so it's a half.
Oh, I think I deep mind too, because they
How long it took, along, curvy, curvy curve of problems to find, you would just touch on surfaces.
Plus, they reconstructed the road too, itself, when it's done, now your base under there is a heck lot better than what it been maybe thirty, forty years ago when they were doing. So it's like he said, like
You're protecting that and care, that's all, like, they're doing stuff on top.
And they do a lot of things different, added drainage and stuff, which, there's a road over by me that I, I still have to say, give you, nineteen ninety-one, they put this road and at the intersection, they redone, but that other road, it was on move, it worked better, it's still that, nineteen ninety-one, the original, I told everyone about that, this is, it's amazing. You have some good base underneath there, it'll work.
It's, it's a nice No.
And then sidewalk replacement, you just have to maximize that factor here.
Yeah, so, so, um, we, we tried to do a sidewalk replacement project, uh, once every two years. And I think we it's skipped over, uh, a year in the sake of, uh, sidewalk consolidation on Second Street. There, 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 there was a reason why we skipped a year. Uh, but it's, it's time that we have
Were indicating where there were hazards back in the day, and you would just replace single accessors, you know, for the two of us. Whatever, how many of those would you do in that, or that time allowed, if I could, like, that?
So we, we would, we would do that, um, and then we would take whatever, what we have and take it as far as we can. Um, the, the goal being to be able to do all of that.
Here, if you look at the hundred eighty thousand.
Yeah, I just don't really like what that, right, you know, we have, we have, it's nature hazards.
Well, and, and, and again, there's, there's different fixes, so on, some of them, you're able to pump underneath the sidewalk to lift it up. So like, if, if, if the slab is in good shape, you just pump it and make a, make a bubble. Uh, if it's cracked or chipping, if you have a big toe catch, then you might replace that, that flag of, of sidewalk.
Yeah, concrete, so concrete prices are I don't know if they're low bid, it's somewhere like sixty, how about a square foot? It's all replacement, so you think there were five by five sidewalk, that five by five is what, twenty-five square feet? Nine to eight is two hundred dollars. Okay, plus whatever the numbers are, Google bill, and restoration on the side, you're gonna make some graphs. So if, you know, if you set whole flag costs three hundred or one hundred replaced, you wanna do two to each crack. It's eight hundred for that sections, so, you know, you could do approximately a hundred eighty of those sections. You're running up to a thousand three point, you do a hundred eighty spots. I don't know the option price now.
Was that?
I, I mean, the option price, I don't know.
No, I think that's about correct. I think it's, I'm second, it's five or six dollars per foot.
And, and, and the reality is, is that some of these are gonna be not as midline sidewalk, with the
That's
They're more expensive, those jumps there, bigger. So, you know, you don't just do two flags ever, you gotta be level landing, sometimes it's curved, that's your flag.
It's ruined though.
So if, if, if the cost was up here, her location, we'd
But, but, but our, our goal was
I did not take our but I do have
So
Yeah, ring off.
Yeah, and, and Kurt has the last. Kurt, Kurt, Kurt has the running last, so if you have a whole location, it'll be
Or, but he also likes, he wants great paint, but she doesn't
So you do not, I think they're using that.
No.
I'm not saying do it, I'm saying that, that would, you know.
Kurt doesn't like any paint on the T V, he doesn't, including also when he might have like
True priority to replace right away, it's painted on.
My, is that there is an E P A on ten extra crossings that, that the red part is coming off.
We have a couple of them, so.
Yes, then I will, I'll be around for, for, that's compliance, or, okay. I saw one.
But, uh, this is everyone I'm bored with, 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 with Dan Boy.
Got it.
Uh, so, other funds, uh, so this includes solid waste, tree replacement, special project. Solid waste, we can go, I'm actually go along the course, where, um, we keep pretty tight margins in solid waste. Uh, solid waste covers things like leaf collection, shipping, in addition to traction, cycling pickup. Um, from last year to this year, we have to be rate flat at twenty-five dollars, because we're able to, to deal with that and, or handle that in the, uh, fund bank. Uh, that we, we budgeted to be able to do that. Uh, but we're, we're predicting that we'll want to increase that rate to twenty-six fifty next fiscal
My, my mom's, they didn't say anything about getting those, so they came. They have a little paper, well, they'll get it stuck in there, and they don't use this until they pay for it, so they start using it. And they are, there's, of course, two of them, and they're bigger than the ones we have here. You know, oh, they're, they're just, they're just huge, just huge, and they are doing it themselves, they don't have like a management company. And they can't get them, and they dump them on the street, it's really sad, I feel bad for their department, but, that's the way they're doing it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's
It can be awful, what we have, so smooth. That's what my point is.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's been some pretty significant changes in solid waste collection over the last, what, years, I mean, police management isn't even bidding out any contracts, when they can't do voters anymore, just because they, they don't want the liability or, or the have the manpower to be able to have people getting out of the truck to physically grab the cannon or come with it back. And wait, wait, management is by far the main player in this whole, all anymore. Uh, I mean, they've bought out a number of different companies. Uh, I think Republic or Advance, was it, or else, yeah.
Well, it's, it's like, yeah, I, but, uh, I don't know, you got to be pretty strong, man, even. Well, it's that high, but like, but I don't know, you got to be pretty strong man either to get above it, to get some leverage to put that. Fortunately, I don't have to do it, because my family does it, I would be hard to rest.
What is definitely happening with that?
Yeah, when you do this, they, I don't know if they dropped it or forgot about it, but.
You watch the video exactly.
He was sure. Okay, so this is not about.
No, I I, what I also think it is, it's, uh, it sounded like they were meeting with all of the municipalities of the service in the area. Well, I, well, I think enough that now that. They 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 got the picture real quick. So.
You.
I I believe it, yeah. I don't know, but if anybody heard, call Ron, Paul, Paul, when he was driving, the person that they were, yeah, find out.
Yeah. He's doing really well, though, I was having a meeting today, he's really getting along, that was a serious problem.
He was at Park class, I mean.
Yeah.
He's been good here.
Yes.
What do you think about that? I like, I think they're always the one that they need to, they would back. I see the one guy, he always takes the break, he was like, maybe he's working on the morning, the one guy, he always takes the break.
It's me believing, yeah.
I think you have read from neighbor community, there's struggles with waste management, it just, that's all I have to say. Sorry, not the company, but just general waste management.
Yeah.
Well, we, we, as long as I've been here, they've been here. And I don't think we've ever bid this contract. Talked about it at the time, we've talked about it whenever we've always decided to, certainly had this. We've always, they've always done, the service part, that's always been really high, a long time, we had a local route through, that's, yeah, that's, that's, we have, close. But, and that's what was last, remember that, did you get this, shows the rates out? This, that came out of conversation. Then it's coming to an end.
Twenty twenty-four, I think it's, so that's what we should expect to.
So I noticed that on your equipment replacement fund. Like, you have the three hundred twenty-two times three stuff in there, and six. The four of those items, but the other two are two hundred, and that, if you want that, maybe a bitch sixty-six. I'm trying to catch you, sir, in the second year.
Yeah, so the the bus truck's at a hundred and fifty, and the motor cab is at fifty.
Yeah, so I saw two hundred there, it's a hundred eighty.
Oh, yeah, I I, even when I just read it, I read, I read that it is a third, rather than fifty.
Well, that's no problem.
But 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 that's a good question.
Can you program out further than two years on this?
Yes. Um.
I know this would be a special one on twenty twenty-five, you know, if you have, there's this two hundred thirty-five thousand of, uh, next, you know, pitch.
Uh, so so I I I have it in the spreadsheet.
Yeah, it's spreadsheet.
Yeah, this is a separate problem, obviously.
Yes, okay. So, so. Is that, what's that, clean up or clear it up, or?
They're not, they're not.
Is it gonna show? Stuff like the purchases?
I'm sorry, we need.
But those are technically.
They can, you got capital expenditure, so.
It'll have, it'll show like over ten, ten hundred.
Close to four, close to four. So hopefully, be less clunky than I thought, what I have right now.
All right, you said it talks to B S N A, does it listen?
No, I didn't listen to B S N A, B S N A just wasn't there.
Okay.
For one-way conversation.
Okay, so my point is, if you put two hundred thirty-five thousand B S N A, three dollars will show up on the clear valve data, that is one way.
Actually, while we, I think we just, if you bunch of work and clear valve, it does help with the budget of the B S N A.
It does.
Yeah, I guess it does help with.
Okay, because you just have to export, maybe S N A expression into it, work in it, and then export it back out. But kind of on that topic, you can see on the sixty-eight, kind of the general agents of the market, so. There's, there's a point of it that's, that's, you know, in up there, they're just twenty years plus. Um, Tesla's, yeah. I I I was, I was gonna talk to her about about the Tesla, you know, I heard.
They made it, yeah. Well, he laughed at me, he says, I'm not gonna talk to these things. Uh, diesel engine, or happens if it's a electric engine that can pump up properly, stuff like that, it's on paper, showing they're using garbage trucks and stuff, so.
So we warm out the bucket truck?
Uh, I mean, the 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 bucket truck is still alive, um, but we want to replace it before, or disup.
What do we determine, we can trade in or we can't trade?
We we have, we did a trade-in for.
Do we have that?
Okay. Um, but I mean, that that doesn't seem necessarily giving the best value.
Right, so, yeah, yeah.
Which, which I think will probably be a conversation that comes out of the community survey.
So, yeah, well, there would be any, so we're expecting to buy two things, and then bring it down to the, the one.
If 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 we were to sell.
Uh, right, so like in theory, the plan is, you trade it yourself, so it would be two things. And so I think we. Down the battle. Or, I mean, I think we're thinking about November, having, we're going to be in that November, I don't know, I'll see if we can talk to that.
Well, so so the the thing, you know, I I don't know what the market is for second trucks, but I imagine they, there's the possibility of that being a backorder, so even if we were to place the order from now. I mean, I think we we have a truck that Kurt ordered, beginning of the the current fiscal year, so like, June or or July or August, and we still haven't gotten it.
Yeah, we had a couple of things in the last couple of years, in fact, we had a truck that we actually ordered, um, prior, because we got a extended cab that really didn't need, but by the time the single cab came out, it was gonna be more, the what the extended cab was, that we could get to that, so we went with that option, which, and that we did, because it's actually worked out really well, so.
Should be, I think, sort of an example of showing what.
Right.
Right, in terms of, yeah, the personal property, but I don't know if it's meant for that, or if it's too confusing, because we will have, I guess, office, something related to property, real property. So I still know, and that's, and like, task, you're playing in the office.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. So I guess we have some time to talk about that, I think it's worth that conversation.
Yeah.
The survey results, if we play a question off the chart, and then that's gonna be funny. Or.
Well.
We can use it as educational, or, or that potentially, that.
I think, yeah.
Right. The reason we are creating that, you know, if, if November, if you think of that, it will be better, otherwise, anything like this. If we're dead, what is that, you're leaving the place, you're doing all for this pot money, do you even, or you could put the asset back, and maybe trade these two in for this value? I mean, like, if we ever sell anything, like, you know, it's going down, it needs to come, right, to the bottom of the pool, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We'll agree on that.
Yeah, and and, you know, I think there's pretty strong sentiment to be out of the community survey. Does anybody have any questions to any of these funds? Surry water. Um, so, you know, as as we talk about water and sewer, the thing that it's all wanting to define going forward is that. The further we go, the less likely it is that we'll be getting significant tap fees. Um, unless we have, you know, significant development. Um, you know, we've been pretty fortunate over the last couple of years to be able to have access to, uh, to those significant developments that have generated a significant number of tap fees. But when those tap fees are no longer there, uh, then it's rate pairs that are, are gonna be a very burden of the whole cost of the water and sewer systems. So with that being said, we are planning for some tap fees coming from Grandview Commons and, uh, the Millennium Plate is on the ground, so, over the next two years. Uh, what was some, some more minor tap fees coming from U I S, and, uh, I think there's one whole bucket in West Ridge that has a big tap fee set.
And are tap fees, I think, we're talking some additional, there's some fixed, starting cost, that the city has incurred into a commodity cap, or is it just saying you're adding to our, you know, tap fee, you know, what it's.
What?
I think something more than just adding to this.
Well, the tap fees were developed as part of our last rate study, and it takes into consideration cost of like future repairs, and or now maintenance repairs, and the cost of basically tapping in and giving, putting more stress on the system. And as part of the rate study that is in the budget for this year, I hope I didn't surprise everybody, um, so those tap fees will be revisited. But we haven't changed tap fees. And it is assessed, assessed on for R U, and then Michelle, like, you have something that you, uh, residential equivalent unit of use, and it's three thousand per water and high levels. Yeah, and then if you have a business or a multi-family, or something that's usually more than one R U, Michelle has a formula to calculate.
But it's not necessarily like a start-up cost to the city for a commodity that, it's just saying, you're increasing wear and tear on the system, right? Thanks, that's what I should, right, you know, to do that.
And 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 your base is the the forever.
Give an example, the tap fee for sewer in my community, where I am, fifteen thousand.
That's what I said, I thought it was pretty.
Yeah. I just, yeah, I just wanted to understand, like, if that's the thing I did, and I'd like to make that, yeah. I just like to think about, see, the way we turn around here.
Yeah. Well, there was, there's very.
So so can you, can you hold the tap fee, or can you just email out to counsel the tap fee? Um, there's enough, agreement jurisdiction, or, 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 set it, so you can do it. Because it's, because it, it gives a little bit of that, what justifies it, and and, you know, and it's harder, but it's not. It's one component of our overall cost structure, right, addition, addition to rates.
It's a thing, so back to the question, right, you guys are like, I don't want this to be on me. Uh, this idea of like, when somebody buys, they will bill, or they buy, they bill, and then the tax will, and then that goes out. So you have the two of them next to each other, and they're paying different amounts, but really, there is. Uh, and so I'm trying to analyze that to this, and trying to figure out where it's now, and where it's not. It seems like where it's now, I guess, is that it's somebody new, like, entering the system, and they're being sort of charged repeatedly on it, although there's possibly additional wear and tear, I guess, on a system, I suppose, if you, when you build, there's probably additional wear and tear on a system, like roads, or, I don't know, now.
So, yeah, but, yeah, there's, um, and I I don't know all of the, the balance behind it, um, that's not my area of expertise. But there are, um, it's pretty, pretty specific laws that are involved with user fees, as opposed to taxes. And the user fee has to have a benefit to the person that's using it, and this includes the tap fees. So when the people that do this type of research, you can't just call around, the community's around you and say, hey, what do you charge for tap fees? And then charge an average of that, they actually have to have data that shows that this is the appropriate amount of tap fee to charge. So it's definitely user-based, whereas tax is a general, you know, everybody uses it kind of thing. But I don't know, they're not the value maker, that's why we get a big bucks.
Well, and it, I mean, a long, long time ago, I have this fund. The actual cost of, the cities actually perform, or, because the others actually perform a protection on the water, and tap to that home, there was a cost to it, based upon size of the line, and the number of people, and how long that it'll come to, and size of. At that point, it was none of that, over time, it's evolved to be, uh, you know, there's a, there was an agent steward that you're getting, that's the connection to, that some of the industrial systems need to maintain, to care of. This is your portion of that historical, of your maintenance, you know, at the one time, that we had to do it. And since it's a, become a quasi-legal way of having another, but it's, it's, it's society, right?
Right.
So it's all home, in order to be the adapting.
Right.
And what we, what we did, like, Grandview here, they're showing twenty tap fees, right, there was twenty-three units there. And the red.
Not, not, it's the, the, they have them present.
I'm sorry, camera with all.
Camera.
I I said it wrong, but if you don't have all, I can, there's twenty-three units there, there's twenty, we're starting with twenty tap fees. We must be giving a credit to three for the property that's already there, because somebody's already finding a benefit of three, so, because they're putting twenty-three on, so we're starting at eight for three, we can only charge twenty-four. But, you know, to to to, to get where you started off, you know, that these are part of the light blood, a lower than thirty, thirty tap fees. Or in this case, the, for, for this year, we got in fifteen point one six. Seven plus four point one six for one fifteen, so on the water fund, that's forty-five thousand dollars. Okay, the sewer fund, fifteen and seventy-five thousand. Yeah, if, if, if we see, if we ever see thirty, forty-five, broad, you know, you know, where they're proposing a hundred and ninety units or something across the two buildings. So, you know, a hundred and ninety was a long way in terms of years, compared to fifteen, that's, I think, about ten years with the total projection, in one develop, if we could figure out how to get that moment on the system. So if it's survivable for fifteen a year, and then for so many years, if you add two hundred. So if it's survivable for 15 a year, and then for several years, if you add 200. If you're a president or a theorier, you're not in trouble with this.
But even if you're saying the amount we have is, yeah, it's not like if that completely went away, we might have to spread it out or, you know, and the ratings be that much.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I, I mean, it would, it would be.
Yes, yes.
Uh, I mean, that, that's not a 50% increase, but it would be. And it, you also wouldn't be, probably wouldn't end at all in one year either if it was spread out.
But that's what it's saying, which is you have to make up that level, you know, $45,000 of the counter on this year coming in. Now, whether it actually comes in, you know, power could be a strong, not do anything to zero. I think that's where the, you know, it's a battle, right?
Yeah. The other reality about sewer, I mean, we, some of what used to be in the sewer fund, but it's we're still paying for some of the past. Um, there was a lot of work made sense, you know, like 20 years ago. Um, and rates weren't being raised. And then they had all that development coming in and never flushed with sewer tax. Well, now we're not flushed with sewer tax anymore, but things are getting more and more and more expensive. A, a small problem with sewer, it should be, you know, 500,000 dollars bits. So having those tax kind of helps us. Yeah, yeah, exactly. Instead of being 100% sold.
But those, that's my, my thought, if we could, we'd, 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 we could add 20 to your users on Grant Street, we remember existing that, so it's a huge one and, and that take the time to work. That's better than spreading out the amount that sewer could be harder to do. More to take care of. We do the same number of users, but doing it more to maintain. We just, we do up, we do up your long term costs.
Plus also, I mean, everybody charges tap fees. So when a developer comes, developer comes in, they've already paid for that, it's there.
Well, the home buyers pay.
If I don't know if there's, if there was no tap fee, I don't, I don't know if the home buyer would necessarily get a
Right.
cost of it. Hold it from proper. Sorry, that was very weak signal.
But kind of in that vein, one of the things that we're, two of the things we're looking to do this current list and the upcoming list on here are the reliability study and rate study. And so the rate study is typically done by, who is also are funded by external financial folks and it's, they'll take a look at our number of users or charging, what our projected costs are and tell us that, you know, what we're charging is fair and how much over, how much we should increase over the next, you know, five years. You know, you'll, you'll have, you'll be out there that will do 0% increases. And then find themselves in a situation where they have to do a 50% increase in one year because they haven't been taking care of this. Yeah, so. Um, and then on the, on the other side of it, with the liability study, it's looking at where are we in terms of our users, you know, how much capacity do we have to continue this service? That way our potential future. Um, I don't know if you want me to, to reach to a list of, of possible projects or just want to ask you a few questions. Um, we, we are looking at a 7% increase on sewer side consistent with the last two specific years. And a 3% increase on land on the water side. And a lot of those 7% has to do with the, the 2018 bond that we got for, which are pretty flat.
Do we have an actual quote? Working on it. Okay. I, I just talked to him over a week ago. So I'm trying to talk to the fire inspectors slash engineers of the, that did the water tower last time. And so I gotta get, I have to get my fellow do it free from all the painters, not the painters themselves, the paint company, Sherwin-Williams or the Tarmac, I think is the other one, where they come on, they can test the tower and see exactly what's going to be. Uh, so I don't want to put any prices on that until we find that out.
Do they spray it?
Actually, no, I thought they did. They roll it on.
Oh, roll it on?
Yeah. I didn't know that. So I was actually at my house, my foundation.
Yeah.
They're out there with rollers and I called him right away. I'm like, you guys, don't you spray that? He goes, no. Because we're rolling. And it was fantastic. So.
I just saw 140,000.
Yeah. I think by talking with one that did it last time, that I'm, I'm pretty sure that's going to be a good number. It's just all depends on how the outside is, you know, which I don't think it's that bad. And he said, he's, you know, having a lot worse.
This is the outside tap fees.
Yes. So you guys can think of the name. What's that?
Where you get to make the tuck in, but I just want to.
Yes.
Yeah, that was loud, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I would rather have a roll that's spray also.
It would be.
Down back yard.
Use that here as all.
So, but, uh, yeah, so, so the, the water costs attributable to the second street project and the art funds is quickly going to come in at 350, which would leave us about 140,000 art funds. Which this, this is the project that we've been waiting for, for, for 10 years. So.
When's the last time it was?
If you can get the name.
I think it was 2018. I don't, I don't remember either. My understanding was 2018. So, yeah, I'm pretty positive.
Is it going up like it looks now?
It's all going to come back. We can put.
Same color?
Whatever you guys want. It would be same color, I mean, unless you guys, I imagine, but.
There's one, I'm, I'm throwing that, I think it's like a, a hard seat for me.
Yeah.
I'm hoping that we.
They should do a Florence, um, what have we got? Florence and Monty. There's a painted yellow with, like, smiling face on one side, like a Florence doll on that one.
It's just absolutely, you stand by the guy next door. So these little bricks up, I guess it's supposed to be oil, but all these years I thought it was a water fountain. And it's really concerning in this area, so.
I imagine it's, because Justin and I talked about that, you know, I mean, if we stay back with the white again and then whatever you guys want to put as far as if you don't want to put anything or want to put the city of Dexter.
Well, like, they were, they were.
Every 30 years, James, wow, look at that, something 30, 40 years.
I was fearful when they put it in, it was to make it, it was these conspicuous spots.
Well, Mystic wanted to know, they can put a logo up there. Mystic, you know, they.
Oh, Miss Day. Oh, yes, okay.
So that was, they were, they were wanting to put that.
Did they run a page for the paint job?
Uh, no, they would give us a fee every year. So, but.
And it's, when we, her project, it depends on the size of, you know, staying low.
The bigger it is, the more money.
Yes, and the one he was showing it was, it, he talked about it. It's not that it was a bad, it's just not on our water. I just didn't think.
We have on our trucks.
We have on our trucks. We have Mystic stuff all over our trucks.
Did they pay us?
What's that?
Did they pay us?
No. But, but, but still when people come.
Well, yeah, we, 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 we do still get a benefit from it.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think, you know, bring, bring it back to, to, I, I actually, I'll be, um, we're, you know, if, if we put Dexter up there just in water, water, I mean.
Why do you want to put extra? All of it.
Just moving out of the water.
Those were Dexter.
What?
Hey, those were Dexter.
You think we will can't find it or?
Nobody's going to see it. Nobody's going to see it.
Um, this is my, where is a lot of, totally invisible, they can't. Make a row.
I can see a big make a row, but you can't see it from the three line. But there's a certain amount of pride that you're seeing two different, different things with the, you've got your gazebo. You've got your signs if you commit to the city of Dexter.
We got the gazebo, we had to sign a contract. You would put anything on it or pound it, put any tags in. That's the one in the experience, uh, if you remember that. Yeah.
I, I know, I have to put a water, I have a water tower.
I got it.
Yeah.
How much money you have?
I just wanted to ask Ray about, so the fund balance, okay, 75.
Okay, let me get there.
We're in the sewer fund.
Get your back. I'm still on road.
I was going to say about 28, it starts in.
I was going to say, yeah, okay, I want balance on any subcar.
So. The fund balance here shows you the 2.7 million or something.
That's, yeah.
Okay, so, so the, the cash that we have, which is what the rate study is going to analyze is in the sewer fund, that was one of the laws, found me 4,000.
I actually kept that up.
There was a recommended percentage of revenue.
Yes.
That we were supposed to have, I think, the numbers, 75%.
75%, yeah. Um, so right now, the sewer fund has 599,000.
That's pretty close. So to give you an idea, we're at 72. We've got revenue. That's its role. Recommended reserves are 75% expense. So 75% of what that's operating across, yeah, would be a couple of million, maybe two or something. So what we're behind what we're behind where we would like to be, we used the 15% question earlier, right? What we're behind what, if they're not in a enterprise one, where we, where we should be here. And that's why, you know, I called last year and set aside the stabilization in, like, 248,000 or whatever it was. Instead of the sire has a potential stabilizer, this fund should be used for the, that's why it's outside of funds. So it's, we just put it through the fund there, that it's in seven spots, so it's just there. So we're in the front, 12,000. But these fund balances are not true cash.
Well, and, and, and also on the flip side, um, just to be frank, 2.3 is the first year we're projecting a positive revenue over expense. The last five, yeah. Have, have, have been negatives.
We've drawn some.
Yeah.
So that'll remember that this board will be, over this five years will pull really at the upper end of our target if nothing changes. And we don't have any kind of.
So I think that's worth pointing out, of all the funds we're talking about, our surplus or revenue reserves, we don't have that for the reserves in sewer fund right now. You have to be careful there on the spending. Maintenance we're doing is keeping us from spending, you know, if you jump beyond over 10. You want to spend enough to do maintenance, you need to do something else. So we're, we're behind April on, on where we want to search. And then, then the RMI doesn't do the same exercise with the water.
Water.
So that is it.
Water is actually better, 676, 542, when it has far fewer expenses.
Yeah, so we're, we're a much higher percentage here. Our reserves are a much higher percentage of our expenses. Sewers, uh.
If I was back at work, where we have to, you know, require to do some of that problem. Evil or whatever they're called, or, or that.
Well, if you do that, that would be. So David, my, what I will also about that is if we could, if we could get this one more solid, it was $300, 212,000. In case it did, that could be repurposed with the general fund expense. Whether that takes this year or two years or three, say, four years from now, we can get back to that. The rate study, I'm sure that's.
The rate study, they, they come out.
And, you know, we could get their basket, because we could raise water rates, you know, eight, nine, 10%. We'll try to keep them, I'm not saying do that.
I know, like, I said, I don't think people would.
We're, we're biding our time, you know, I work seven years, I don't know that. We're like, we can talk.
This brush always needs attention, so it's going to creep in. So I would rather not get, I worry that it's hard.
Agreed. It's already a big, so.
Right, it's not good. But then when you look at what it actually takes to, it just to perfect.
Uh, we, we, we have to put it out for public hearing. So, so the public hearing is, hopefully adopt, or the, the first meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
That's when they lie out to come in here and talk about the budget. We'll be, we're to follow up.
You're listening as well. I feel like this survey was one big opportunity for people to help, they won't, anyone who's ever done a good survey. I mean, oh, that's the way I, so we'll talk about that, but I, that's the way I see that. Imagine 700 people did. And that's the thing that. You just have a plan for sharing.
Yeah, so, so, um, we haven't set for this upcoming, coming meeting, yeah. So, so, so.
Let's see the results.
Yeah, so, so, so what we're done here, I'll go back to the office and finish up the tap yet.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that was like.
Is someone in on, did that cross?
Are you? Were you surprised by any of this?
Um, not, not terribly. I, I, I think it was all fairly straightforward. I think, uh, you know, it was pretty, pretty. Uh, it seems like everyone was on, on the same page in, in a few areas.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one being the, um, term for sale equipment. And one day everyone really doesn't like any fees for online payments.
Yes, yeah.
Trying to say something. I tried to say something.
Wow.
I said that earlier, it was like those.
Who Julie is.
They're actually, they have resources on the total.
I know, no, I know.
You don't know.
Did you differentiate by reasons that they're residents?
Uh.
Or do you have right now?
I, I, I think we would.
And you know what, it's like 75, 25%?
Yeah, I, I think of the 730 responses, it was 50 that were not residents. Something like that.
So you have a sample now?
No, 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 don't pull me on that.
All right.
I, 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 I think of like the 730 respondents, it was something like 50 that were not residents. Or, or, or 50 indicated, indicated that they were not residents.
Thanks for a funny thing, guys. And we.
You're welcome.
Was there anything I should say? Here, we provide some background for that, or that would probably get us. And here, Sean, my daughter, Julie's dying, she's stabbing, because you know, I think that you don't have to look. And you, you work where she died, I'm crying to be, so, so, came home, go here. And, um, we're up here. And, you know. Were she not? She said. Seven that they go and then I'll, I'll only record that. So Sean, he's already done.
Suggestion, 200 plus here.
Oh, well, they're pretty polite. My, my. She'll be around, I'd get some, but it was really cute.